Morning, everybody. It's nine o'clock a.m. and I will call the meeting to order for the January 3rd, 2017 County Commission Meeting. We will start with a pledge.
(inaudible)
All right, the first order of business is the reorganization of the board. We will start with the election of the chairperson for 2017. Does anyone have anybody in mind?
I nominate Larry Jensen as chair.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Miller, second by Pierce to appoint Larry Jensen as chairperson for 2017. I'm going to call the roll for this. Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Take it away, Larry.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now would open up for nominations for elected vice chair for 2017.
Make a motion to nominate Commissioner Pierce for vice chairperson.
Second.
All those in favor? Or no? We need to call the roll?
Sure. Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Abstain.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, congratulations.
There we go.
Thank you.
Now I have an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for item not listed. Is there any? Basically, we have anything?
Approval of the agenda next? Or?
Is that where the legislative audit? Jeff Schaefer?
Oh, he's coming at 9:30, but he's on the agenda for item, under regular business, item A.
Okay.
He's coming at 9:30.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
Move approval?
We need to add an executive session to the agenda.
We need to?
After?
After?
After item 14, so like maybe between 14 and 15, so make it. And that's?
Okay, we'll have the executive session, item number 15.
That's in accordance with SDCL 125-2 for contract negotiations.
Move approval is amended?
One second.
He approves it. Chair approves.
Chair approves.
Approved?
Depends what the chair wants.
Yeah, you can declare it approved.
Normally, they don't.
Clear, agenda approved. Consent agenda items, we have approval minutes, approval of travel and education request, approval of cellular allowances, approval of technology stipends, approval of human services report. Look for motion?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, move on to routine business. Approval of claims, look for motion?
Move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Move on to department head reports. Mike, would you like to go first?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, our office is, well, with the holidays, I think we've been kind of sporadic and stuff. We do have one meeting coming up on this Friday that's going to be a joint forces meeting. It was part of an initiative that was started about a year ago where they want to get all the public and private organizations that assist people to get together with the National Guard so that if one of the Guard's members has an issue or something, problem, that there'll be a central place that they can deal with and stuff. I will be gone that day, but Irene will be attending that meeting, that's Friday at 2:00, at the Armory by invitation. Other than that, we, you know, with us being gone so much, our numbers are down. I don't think that necessarily means that the needs are down. It just seems like they call us when they meet the criteria or they're a little more aware of what we can assist with. But with that in mind, we did have 62 calls and 57 calls out, and we had nine veterans stop in and nine people stopped in for welfare in the last two weeks, which is about half of normal, so.
Any questions? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Belv, do you have a report?
I really don't have anything new to report. I'd like to welcome Commissioner Bartley to the board. And Doc Pro is not moving ahead quite as smoothly as I had hoped last time I reported, but they weren't quite ready to train us when they had scheduled the phone call. We went into work on the Doc Pro and the fees weren't in there, the instrument types weren't in there, so they did get that done, but we have not scheduled another training session. They still hope for in January, which I hope for too. The administrative assistant position was advertised, and I'm hoping that's going well with applications and stuff, but that's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bob, would you like to go next?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome Commissioner Bartley. I got your new vest on your thing, and soon as we get those fancy pictures, I'll get you an ID card that you'll be able to slide in the pocket behind it and be official and wear it in good, in good, good spirit. The, I am gone January 10 through 13. I got a pipeline meeting, and I'm going to go to Washington, to Pierre on January 18th with the Brookings Day at the legislators, and then on the 19th, we've got a pipeline safety meeting here in Brookings, which we talked about earlier. If anyone needs assistance signing up for that, after you guys talk about it during your discussions, let me know and I can, we've got more, more blanks down in the office to sign you up. And other than that, that looks like on the gun club letter, the letter's been prepared. I sent it through the Deputy State's Attorney's Office, and now it's resting with my planning office commissioner, and once it's approved by, or corrected of any change that needs to be made, we'll get that letter out today, hopefully, if not today, tomorrow. And then we'll make sure all the commissioners get a copy of the letter. And we did have a storm on Christmas Day. So far, the only damage, all the power is back on in Brookings County. So far, the only damage assessment that we've received is from Sioux Valley Electric for $25,000 worth of damage in Brookings County. We had to meet a threshold of approximately $115,000 for us to be able to claim any disaster only from the state of South Dakota. So right now, looks like we weathered that storm in pretty good fashion. And as far as county overtime and all that for the storm, that's the highway superintendent will tell you that. I don't have his number. I concentrated mainly on the public utilities and contacted all the small towns to see what expenses they had, and two small towns opened, Oakton opened a shelter for people that needed, needed sheltering. Bruce had to back, fire up their backup generator due to their lift station, and basically, we received no cost on either one of those from the municipalities, and it sounds like Toronto did open up a shelter for the people up on the northern park, North of White up in that area for us. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Chris?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Vicki?
I don't have anything today either.
Okay. Sheriff?
I have some things, but they're secrets, so I'll have to pass.
I don't have anything unless you have questions. We just had just routine stuff for the last couple of weeks, so.
I think we could probably go ahead and start with Todd's.
Start with Todd's.
I mean, it's just kind of a suggested time for him, so it's not like it's a public hearing or anything, so we can, we can go early.
Go on to item number 10, scheduled agenda items. Todd Case, Executive Director of First District Association Local Government.
Hey, good morning.
Nice to see you.
Okay, all right. Good morning.
Morning.
It's cold out there. Roads are better north of the Brant, or south of the Brant exit than they are north of the Brant exit. Anyway, good morning, my name is Todd Case, and I'm the Director of the First Planning District, and it's always nice to get out at least this first quarter of the year and meet and greet all of our county commissions and talk just a little bit about the First District and what it is that we do for you and all of our members. So we have just a very quick PowerPoint and another handout that talks a little bit about some of the activities that we've been working on in Brookings County over the course of the last year. So normally, this first part of the year, there's always, there's sometimes a new county commissioner, and there's Mike, but Mike knows enough about our board because he currently sits on our board as well. But the First District is one of six regional planning and development districts located in the state of South Dakota. We have sister offices in Brookings, excuse me, in Aberdeen, Yankton, Sioux Falls, Pierre, and Rapid City. Next slide, please. We are not government, but we were created through executive order by Governor Frank Farrar in 1971. We, we operate under what's commonly called a joint powers agreement, so we have 11 counties and 76 communities. Last year was 75, but now we have the new city of Brant Lake, the newest city in South Dakota, is now a part of the district as well. But next slide, please. We are basically an organization that provides technical services to our members. Those technical services are basically put in place to assist those local units of government that maybe do not have technical expertise in grant writing or planning or what have you, and the whole purpose of the organization is to help promote community and economic development within the region. We have a governing body of 35 members. Each county has a representative to the board. Currently, Stephanie Miller is Brookings County's representative. We have elected municipality representative to our board, Fred Weeks has been on our board for many, many years, and the last couple of years, Mike Bartley has been our at-large representative. We also have Chairman of the Flader-Santis Sioux and Sismoapan tribes also sit on our boards as well. Maybe I'm just going to take a quick timeout, and we can talk just a little bit about our board makeup. I've been with the district for 24 years, and I've never had the experience of when we had an at-large member decide to run for county commission and win, and actually, this year, we had it happen here in Brookings and in Roberts County, so I have two county commissions where the at-large members also are now county commissioners. In reviewing our, our bylaws, it does not say that our at-large rep cannot be a county commissioner. So after talking with Stephanie and Mike about this last week, they've both said that they'd like to serve on the board, and if it's the brothers of the county, I have no objection to that because they've both been very good board members, attending meetings, and been supportive of the organization. So I just wanted to let you know that we can still continue to have both Mike and Stephanie on the board based upon our interpretation of our bylaws. Next slide, please. How are we funded? Basically, we have three general income streams. The first is dues. All counties and all municipalities with a population of over 100 pay dues into our organization. We use those dues to leverage other state and federal grant funding opportunities. We also do specific state and federal contract work as well. Between dues and state and federal contracts, that's about 51%, 52% of our operating revenues, and then we have fee-for-service work as well, and that's about a little under 50%. And the fee-for-service work that we do is basically projects that maybe take more than just a day or two to do in the office, something that might take a month or a week, and we're able to do those fee-for-service works at rates less than you would find in the private sector through the power of the collective from the dues that come in. So we might take dues from Dull County, for example, if we're not doing work there, and apply them here in Brookings County, or vice versa, just to help spread the costs out. Next slide, please. As far as our staff, we have a very seasoned staff, over 160 years of combined work experience. We have 12 full-time employees, as well as two part-timers and a new intern. So I've been with the district for, like I say, going on 24 years. The easiest part of my job is staff. They take care of themselves because they take care of our, our members. Next slide, please. What do we do? The list here on this slide is, is not all-inclusive because basically, we're responsive to whatever our members wants, wishes, or needs are. We do a lot of application packaging, grants, loans, community projects. If you're fortunate enough to get funding from the state or the Fed on those types of projects, we then also help with the administration of those dollars because there's a lot of red tape, a lot of I's, a dot, T's, a cross that goes along with that. Regarding planning and research, we do a lot of base research for our members. We assist in housing needs analysis, we assist in planning and zoning development, we do site analysis work, we probably do, we'll do economic impact studies, census information. I mean, if there's something specific that you want to know about your county or how other counties are doing things, wage analysis, what have you, you just call and ask us, and we will, we've probably done one of those reports or studies. I should, I'm going to shift here for just a second. We do a lot of work in policy development as well, as you're well aware, and the policy development, our role has always been to be the facilitator of the conversation. If the county has an interest in developing a policy for, let's talk zoning for gravel pits, what we will do is we will research what other counties do regarding gravel pits. We will bring you those examples, we will help the conversation to see what is that you want to do with gravel pits in your county. We will help, assist in actually writing the language and then letting it vet through your process. We lots of times will act as the devil's advocate and kind of point out pitfalls and problems and holes and what is that you're trying to do, and in the end, it really becomes the county's final decision on what the policy is. I can tell you, over the 24 years of my experience in policy development, I've never voted on any ordinance that was adopted by a county or a city that's basically, you know, it's your ball of wax to play with. So I'm going to move on from that aside. We also do a little bit of work in other specific technical areas. Geographic information system is a huge part of our office. We have three and a half people that work solely in database management and GIS, and we've been doing that for over 20 years, and we're, I think we're a leader in the state in GIS. We also have a sister organization called the First District Development Company, four staff people working primarily under Paula Housher, and we are a Small Business Administration Certified Development Company. And the CDC that we have is we partner with banks throughout the district and in the state to provide other funding sources for individuals wanting to expand or start new businesses, and we actually did one deal here in Brookings County this last year. And then we're out there schlepping any of the other state, federal programs that you see out there. Next slide, please. So I think we do a tremendous amount of work in a lot of varied areas that it's hard to provide what's the value of the work we do on a, on a dollar-for-dollar basis, so what we always come back to is how do we perform in bringing out sites, funding sources into the region? And last year, we were able to assist our members across 11 counties obtain 20 and a half million dollars in loans and grants for a variety of public projects. 4.475 million was done just solely in grants. So our return on investment last year across the district for every dollar's worth of dues, about $17.80. If we take that look at just since 2008, and I use 2008 because that was the year I took over at the district in the director's position, about $27 a year. Since 2008, over $54 million in grants have been awarded within the 11 counties and communities of the First District. Next slide, please. Brookings County specifically, we, we were able to assist the county with about $149,000 in grant work. Since 2008, it's been about nine and a half million dollars in grants that have come into Brookings County that we've, we've helped out with. I mean, it's, we don't have the money, it's not in our closet, we just don't hand it out. We don't sometimes do all the grant work, we, sometimes we'll just shepherd it, sometimes we'll do the full writing of it, but we've been in the kitchen at least with the, with the nine and a half million dollars. So $2.76 this year, return on your investment, which is positive, and 22.69 over the last eight or nine years. And you can see, you know, if you go back to the previous slide, this year we were down $17, last year we had $37 return on our investments, and it just happened, we had some very large rural water projects that happened in 2015. The last slide, I did, just wanted to reference that we did do one loan in Brookings County where we were able to assist in leveraging $231,000 on a half a million dollar business expansion here in Brookings County. The other quick sheet I wanted to just look at is, these are some specific projects that we worked with throughout the county and some of the municipalities in Brookings County over the last year. The Brookings County, we, we maintain a lot of statewide GIS databases that the county has access to, those databases are paid for by the state of South Dakota, so it's just something that, once we develop it, and if the county wants to use it, they can use it, and it helps them with their GIS as well. Luke Muller in our office spends a lot of time over the last couple of years here in Brookings County. He attends all of the Brookings County planning and zoning meetings. Luke was very instrumental in working with the County Planning Commission and the County Commission last year in completing the comprehensive land use plan, which hadn't been done for probably 15 years, I suppose, and has also been working with the planning staff here in working on the county zoning ordinance amendments, which I'm told should be coming together later this spring for a public hearing and processes. As far as some of the municipality work that we've been working on, did an environmental review in Aurora to put ICAP housing there. City of Brookings, we've helped them the last couple of years with some of their administration on some of their SRF loans for municipal utilities, sanitary sewer projects, and some drainage projects. Sinai, we finished up that project here this last year with the Sanitary Sewer Lagoon where we helped them find the grant and administer those dollars. We did receive a $10,000 grant in Volga this last year to study their wastewater system, and they'll probably be doing a wastewater project this next couple of years with the housing growth that's been going on in Volga. We can see the need for that. Last year, this last year, Al Hooton worked with our office, and I'm going to say Al carried the lion's share of the, of the project, but we applied for a South Dakota Department Governor's Office Economic Development partnership grant, and those grants get funneled through our office, the applications to the state, and Ted Hader at our office worked with Al, and Al was very fortunate enough to get that $133,000 grant. We also are doing planning and zoning assistance to many of the municipalities within the, within Brookings County. We're also administering a Brookings Dual Rural Water System replacement project for water meters that started last year. We also were able to attain a 70,000, $66,000 grant last year to do economic development activities, and so I just divide that by the 11 counties, and Brookings' share was about $6,000. So there's just a little bit more specific information on the return on investment based on grants. We love working in Brookings County and all the municipalities. We feel that we have a wonderful rapport, wonderful rapport with the, with the board members and municipalities. We have good board membership on our governing body and look forward to continued good working relationships with you, and I'd be more than glad to answer any questions about the organization or work that we're doing here in Brookings County.
I guess I got a question, Todd. Of our small towns in Brookings County, how many are members, and how do you, how does it determine the rate that they pay to be a member?
It's a good question. All of the members, all municipalities within Brookings County are members. I believe Sinai, well, I think everybody has over 100. So if you have at least 100 people in the, in the county, you are dues-paying members. If you have less than 100, Bushnell, for example, would have less than 100. We still provide services to Bushnell, it's just that they don't pay dues. How we determine dues is after every census, our governing body has set up a 10-year dues schedule for counties and municipalities. That was brought back to all of the county commissions back in 2012, and each county commission approved the dues schedule moving forward for the next 10 years, so at least we're all eyes wide open, determined, and it's basically the dues is based upon per capita. There's a base fee, and then there's so much per capita for each year. So larger, larger counties such as Brookings County and Connington County do pay a large share of the dues, but then we use those dollars to spread out across the district as well. It's a good question.
Well, I just want to thank you and your team and your staff for all your help, you know, going through our comprehensive plan. That was a big thing for us, it puts us on a, on a path, and the ordinances, we're continuing to work on those. Those are big, big issues for a county, and we appreciate your expertise, your third-party view at things, and the ability to have that information, what other counties are doing and how things are working, really helps us out staff-wise, so we don't have to do that research. And so I guess we look at, you know, the dollars we got in, but I also look at the support we've gotten, and I don't know if you can put a dollar figure on that, so I, you know, not on your board or anything like that, but have the opportunity to work with you multiple times, and very well-run organization, thank you for all your help.
We appreciate you and, and you, and commend you have a wonderful staff here in Brookings, very professional, very competent.
Mr. Chair?
I have, first of all, being the commission member sitting on planning and zoning during the last couple of years, I, I just have to say to you that Luke is such a wonderful member of your staff, and, and he does a great job for us, and we really appreciate him coming to our meetings and participating, and comes to our subcommittee meetings. It's fantastic.
Thank you.
And then I had a question for you. As relates to grants, I don't think Brookings County itself has done anything with grants the two years that, that I've been, we, we looked at, at one, that road grant, I guess, up by Rosebud. Are there grants that we should be considering? Do you tell us if you see a grant that would apply to us, or do we need to be actively contacting First District to say, what is there out there that we should be looking at?
If there is something, let me start by this, we're never twiddling our thumbs waiting for, waiting for the phone to ring. We're always busy doing something, and my, my mantra for the last nine years is to tell you, all you have to do is ask. If they're, if you're looking for a funding source because you're looking at a specific project, between Ted Hader and Greg Mog in our office, we have over 35 years of grant writing and grant administration experience, they know where the pots of monies are. They know where the pots of monies are, if there are any pots of money. Counties by and large, there aren't a lot of specific grant programs for them. The road project grant, agribusiness grants, some of those types of things. I know Dick works with your bridge grants now that's going up, and you guys have a pretty good handle on that. Physical structures, not a whole lot of money out there for jails and courthouses and things like that. There are monies out there for, you know, ambulance systems. We worked with Martin, probably one of the first years I became the director. We got a COPS grant, that's probably about eight, seven, eight years ago, to help pay for some new sheriff's deputies. And so there are programs out there. It's just kind of like, your staff, they know who we are, and if there's something that they're looking for, they generally will call and ask us if there's something that we can help with. We work with Robert on a variety of issues. We can do grant applications. We've done some grant applications to help fund your hazard mitigation and pre-disaster mitigation planning processes. And so there are programs out there, but I always go back, when I first started 24 years ago, and we were doing projects, we felt that you should probably get about 60% to 65% of a project funded through outside funding sources. Well, that pie has shrunk, and there's fewer pies out there. So we think if we get 35% to 40% of a project funded through outside funding sources, that's about as good as we can do anymore. Once in a while, you hit one out of the park, but that's kind of fewer dollars chasing more projects. Good question.
Thank you for everything you do. In all of the time that I have served as commissioner, you guys have been an integral part of what we do, and I have always felt confident that when we came to you with something, we got the best advice that we could possibly get. And I thank you for that. It's a great peace of mind for me.
Thank you.
Keith Todd, I really don't have anything to say, but I'll try. I worked with Todd when I was on the city commission, and he was always professional. His organization was always top-notch. I was very proud to serve as a member at large, and the commission's willing, continuing to serve on that capacity, Todd. You guys do wonderful work. There's just no doubt about it. Thank you.
I guess Marty, do you have a question?
Just that, I think I talked to Todd a while back. I don't know if Todd remembers. I talked about jail funding. If there's anything out there, I just, if you find anything in the corners on anything.
Yeah, I, you're friends to North and Connington County. I get the phone call from Lee Grace, you know, Lee Gable all the time. And we've, you know, it's hard. I mean, jail funding is just a very hard, hard thing. I mean, it's, you have the ability to do that in statute through bonding and those types of things, but they're just not out there at the federal level and the state as well for that kind of funding. But we do keep our eyes and ears open. I think, you know, there could be some equipment funding that you maybe would be able to put to actually look at structural and bricks and mores. It gets tough. Sorry. We still look.
Well, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Larry. Well, very good. And again, just ask. That's all you have to do.
Yep. Thanks for coming. It is 9:30. I have Jeff Schaefer from Legislative Audit would like to give a little talk.
Sure.
Turn the mic on there and...
Okay.
All right. Good morning. My name is Jeff Schaefer. I'm with the Department of Legislative Audit. And probably as many of you are aware, that we have been here on site doing the audit for the past few weeks. And I just wanted to stop by and extend the opportunity, if you have any questions or concerns with the audit, that you could bring them up or stop by and visit in our office down there. We can talk about it anytime. But we're probably finishing up here in the next, oh, two weeks, and we'll have a little meeting with you then. But if you have any concerns, or this is mostly just an opportunity, extend an opportunity to come visit with us, so.
I guess that my question is, do you have any questions or concerns? If not, great.
That's good.
That's really all I have. I just was gonna touch base with you and that's about it. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do need to take action on the engagement letter, though.
I would move approval.
Call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to regular business. Letter A is done. Letter B, action to approve the Brookings Register, Volga Tribune, Tri-City Star, and Elton Record as illegal papers of Brookings County for 2017. Look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Stacy, do you know, we talked a lot about this last year.
Yes.
And how did our actual expenditure amount compare to the year before? Do you have any idea?
I, no, but it was fine. I think the publishing was fine with having that fourth paper.
Yeah, I think so. We were over in elections, but that was because of the big ballot, too.
The ballot with the 10, 13.
The initiatives and everything, yes.
The initiatives was ridiculous in cost this year. So that was going to be extraordinary, no matter how many papers you had. So adding the fourth paper, though, for the routine, the minutes, was not, didn't cause any budgetary issues, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good deal to include all the papers and residents in the county. You know, if you leave one out, one community might not see it, so. Call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action to approve official depositories for Brookings County funds and monies for 2017 as follows. Richland State Bank, Bank Star Financial, Citizen State Bank, First Bank and Trust of Brookings, Dakota Bank, Wells Fargo, Great Western Bank, and Meta Bank.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's none, can please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action to approve Resolution Number 17-01, a resolution setting meeting pay and per diem rates for volunteer county boards for 2017. Look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
These haven't changed. These amounts haven't changed.
We call the roll, Jenna.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action to approve Resolution Number 17-02, a resolution setting the pay for election workers in 2017. Look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question for Vicky. How hard is it for us to get election workers? And do you feel that $11 an hour is a fair rate for compensation for what they're doing?
It is getting harder because the population that we have for the workers is older. And we were thinking, since there isn't an election this coming year, that we would probably be looking at raising that for the next year, for '18. But for this year, since there's not a scheduled actual election, we would, we didn't bring anything forward, but I think it would be a good idea to compensate them more.
And what would you be thinking would be fair for compensation?
I would actually like to see it go to, up a dollar per hour. The $12 and $1,250 and...
And I would like us to discuss, and maybe if we're going to make a change, do it now. Because we're fresh coming off of an election, we remember what it was all about. We're not going to actually impact our budget for this year. We'd have our form right when we have this conversation next year, and we would remember it. And I actually don't think a dollar an hour is more, is enough. But what the election workers do is very important. We want people, and I do believe that a lot of the people that do it don't do it for the money. I do understand that. But it just seems to me like we should be fairly compensating people that do a really important service for us.
I agree they need to be fairly compensated. However, I think the time to do this is more appropriate when we budget for '18.
That's, when would be a good time, Vicky, so you can get it in your budget?
Well, we could talk about it for the 2018 budget. You know, we would have to do it during budget time, so we had enough in the election budget to take care of that.
Yeah, and I guess I certainly understand the point there, too, but I also think Commissioner Miller brings up a good point there, that I guess we'd look to you, Vicky, to bring it to us next election, or next year on your budget, with understanding that there probably is looking at a raise to at least a dollar if that's the discussion comes out.
Right, and we have talked about it, but I guess we just thought we'd bring it next, you know, for the 2018. But I do think that they should be compensated more.
Jenna, call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F, action to approve cellphone reimbursements for 2017. Look for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
When we had this conversation last year, I think we talked about Stacy looking into what we're doing for cellphone reimbursements and how our contract is working. Did that ever happen during this year?
You know, I looked at it for budget time, and then I wasn't here for budgets, so I'd have to look back again at my notes. But I think these amounts have been approved for 2018, or for 2017, sorry.
And if my math is right, we're paying pretty close to $30,000 a year for cellphone reimbursements. Is that correct?
Do you have a total, Vicky?
$2,700 a month, right?
Yeah, I don't have it right with me, no, but...
$2,715 a month, isn't it? Or, no, it's...
Yeah, $2,715 times 12.
I guess I would just ask that each department had go through their list and make sure that the stipend is reflective of what their staff is using the service, I guess. You know, if somebody's not using the phone as much as before or something like that. Any other discussion? Jenna?
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter G, discussion and possible action to assign $45,000 from general fund, unreserved fund balance, to East Central Behavioral Health. Look for a motion.
Do you want to discuss this first a little bit? I know at budget time, you had discussed setting an additional $45,000. Initially, we'd put it in contingency. And then when we realized contingency could only be 5% of the budget, we didn't want to use $45,000 of that for this. So it was visited with, you know, with Brenda, I think, and she said, wait till 2017, and then if the board wants to, you could set aside a sign similar to the other assignments that you make, this $45,000 within the general fund. So it's reflected in the budget, that it's there, and it's set aside. Now, if you decide at some point during the year to give East Central that money, it would still have to, we would still have to do a supplemental budget hearing, a noticed hearing, to give them those additional dollars. Now, that being said, you don't have to assign it either. And you can still do the supplemental budget without assigning those dollars. But if, I guess if it's the board's desire to reflect that $45,000 in the budget somehow, which I think was kind of your intent by putting it into, wanting to put it, initially wanting to put it into contingency, this would be the way to do it. If not, you can leave it. It can sit in fund balance. And if there comes a time when you want to give them the additional $45,000, you can still do that with a supplemental budget hearing.
I guess...
I've got a question for you, though. When supplemental budget hearing, though, that would come out of contingency or no?
No, it would not. It would come out of fund balance. It's really just whether or not you want to account for it within the budget, so it shows in the budget. And then at year's end, if it doesn't, you can unassign it, and it rolls back into fund balance. Or you just leave it in fund balance and just, and do it if you need it. I guess it's basically how you want that budget to look, if you want it to reflect that there's $45,000 there or not.
I guess, Mr. Krogman, you're on that board, I mean...
You know, and I received an email from the executive director of East Central Behavioral Health, and they know it's there. I think we've kind of discussed reasons that we have it there and as an incentive for them. This is, since I've been on the board, we haven't really done something like this. And so we are saying that $45,000 could be potentially for East Central Behavioral Health, so my gut tells me that we should assign it for that, that it's there, and that's what it's there for. As long as it's not, as long as it stays in the general fund, where we have flexibility with it, that if we don't agree that to release that $45,000, it's not stuck there forever. And so I guess my thought would be, I think they're going to work hard to try to get those funds. I know they're already asking, what do you want us to do? And to try to get those. So my gut tells me, I think we assign it in general fund, so we know that it's there. They know that it's there, and it's in writing, I guess, so. But I know they're interested in it. I already received an email from him, and wanted to know what they can do to try to get those funds. And again, it's something different that we haven't done in the past, but I think assigning it would be the right thing to do.
Other discussion? Still need a motion, right?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to assign it $45,000 in the general fund to East Central Behavioral Health.
Second.
Jenna, call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter H, action to approve board assignments and department liaisons for 2017. I guess, discussion...
I think what you typically do is just go down the entire list.
And then approve.
And approve at the very end, then. Make a motion to approve it.
Everybody have a list in front of them? For H Promotion and Expansion Committee, I would stay on that. Brookings Area Transit Authority, BETA.
Yeah, I'd be interested in doing that. Just, yeah. Subject to, depending on how many I end up getting on the other ones.
Okay.
I'll go with that one.
Brookings Regional Railroad Authority.
I can stay on. If somebody else wants it, I can. We don't meet all that often, but...
No, I think it should be noted that that's very, very seldom unless something comes up.
No way, I'm writing down as a committee.
And I'll stay on as a second person. Brookings Economic Development Corporation.
I would be interested in serving on that board.
I've been on that for quite a few years, even prior to county commissioner, and certainly good to have another perspective and some, a new commissioner on board there to have some input and something about that, too. So that's no problem with me. I think I'm still going to stay as a member, but I wouldn't be on the board.
Brookings County Extension Board, Stephanie.
I'll take it unless someone else wants to.
Okay. Brookings Board of Health. Mike?
I can take it if it was Yassour, I guess.
Okay. Domestic Abuse Shelter, ex officio.
I'd like to keep that. That is no longer ex officio. They've changed their bylaws, so I'm a voting member.
Okay, East Central Behavioral and Chemical Dependency Board?
Well, again, I'm up in the air on that one, but. I don't know, I think, the only thing about it is, is it's not bad to have continuity on there. But I also think it's very helpful for all the commissioners to see what goes on in that board. So, um, I don't know if, Mike, you're interested in that or not, or if anybody else is.
One of, one of those meetings, Ryan?
Uh, they are five o'clock on the third Monday, I think is what it is. But, should we, I don't know. Is that, do you wanna hold off on it, or do you want it?
I guess I can take it. I, that's fine.
Let's, let's kinda question that. Maybe I can do that at the end here. East Central Regional Communications Council, I guess I'm on there, and East Central Regional Communication Council, uh, the vice chairs also, Leanne. First District Association of Local Governments?
I'd like to stay on.
Stephanie? Governmental Affairs Committee?
I'd like to keep that.
Growth Partnership Board?
I would, I wouldn't mind having that one.
Okay. Posing and Redevelopment Commission?
That's Jensen.
That's me. Uh, Interleaks Community Action Governing Board, A-CAP. Mr. Bartley?
I can do it.
Joint Powers Board?
I want to stay on.
Okay.
I could do that one, too. Having served on it previously on the city commission prior to the building being built, got some experience there, anyway.
Local Emergency Planning Committee, I guess I'll be on there. Swiftel Center Advisory Board?
I'd like to stay on that.
Planning and zoning board member?
And I'll keep that if that's satisfactory with y'all.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Weed and Pest Board?
I'd like to keep that. I'm very familiar with my old boys.
Youth and Family Services Advisory Board for KDC? I guess. I'm, I can do it, I guess.
No.
They only meet a couple of times a year. And I think it, myself, I've done it the last two years, I think it would be helpful for one of the two people on our jail expansion committee.
Larry, maybe you should let me take that, because you've got a pretty good load, I think.
Okay, if you want.
And, and that reminds me, our jail expansion committee's not on this list. That was the other thing I was.
Yeah, I have it on my notes to add in those names.
Okay, Hospital Board?
I'd like to get back on that one if I could.
Yep. And County Coroner?
Good.
Deputy County Coroner, which is the sheriff. And then Deputy County Coroner's deputies.
Is that all of your deputies?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then I have on here to add the jail expansion committee, too, is, if, that's gonna, it's currently Jensen and Miller.
We'll stay, won't we?
We'll stay.
We've started it. We just as well stay with it.
Yep.
There's two positions there.
Yeah.
That's right, okay. Two blanks in there.
Um, let's go back. East Central Behavioral Health and Chemical Dependency Board?
What do I have? Beta?
I have.
Yeah, it's up unless somebody, I don't know. Yeah, let's do, count one. Had, I lost track. We've got four, I think, plus the.
I know, I made three, so probably me.
I've got five.
Since I have three, I suppose I should be the fourth.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bartley? Okay, Department Liaisons. Uh, Community Health, WIC?
I can do that.
Okay, Ryan? Emergency Management? I will do that.
Yep.
Equalization, I'll keep that. Finance Office?
I can do that.
Get that, Ryan?
Sure.
Highway?
I'll keep.
Register of Deeds?
I'll take.
Sheriff and Detention Center Contract Law, I'll, I'll take.
Take, yep.
Uh, State's Attorney?
I'd like that.
Yep. Veterans and Human Services?
Guess I'll take that one.
Bartley?
Just letting you know, I am a veteran, so.
Weed and Pest?
I'll take that.
And zoning and drainage?
And I'll take that.
Okay, I look for, uh, motion to approve, or motion.
Move approval of these appointments.
Second.
Jenna, call roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, down to number twelve, Commission Department Director Report. Stacy?
Don't have too much today, since we've been meeting every week for the past month. But, um, I did hand out a couple of things. Uh, former Commissioner Y-Seth emailed us all as a citizen yesterday and provided us with some Brookings Health, um, twenty sixteen awards and recognition information. And I handed that out, a hard copy out to, um, to each of you this morning. And then the Brookings Conservation District Agenda, I think I had emailed that out last week, too. But that meeting is tomorrow at one fifteen. And then, just to get on your calendars, the, um, the holiday party at the VFW that we have every year is Tuesday, January twenty-fourth at five thirty. And then as, with upcoming dates, just, um, Brookings Day at the Legislature, are you all RSVPing for that? Or do you want, on your own, or do you want me to RSVP for you for that event? If you're, and who's gonna ride the bus, I guess. I mean, do you know that?
That's all we have to RSVP for, is the bus ride, isn't it?
Is the bus ride, I believe, yeah.
You, I'm, I'm going, would you RSVP for me?
We were gonna discuss, are we gonna go out and?
I think.
The day before and?
Yeah.
Tour the jail, so.
Okay, you're going out.
Yeah, so, um, we might need a motel room.
For the night of the seventeenth? For two of you?
I, um, I'm not sure yet. Depends how I feel. If I will go at all. I don't RSVP for the bus for sure, because I'll be on crutches, so.
Okay. Mike, do you know if you're, what you're?
I plan on attending. I just don't know if I'm driving yet or not. But RSVP for, for the bus, and I could always change it.
You can always change, okay. And you just need two rooms for the night of the seventeenth? Do you care where you stay?
No, not really.
No, okay. Okay. Um, also coming up, on the nineteenth of January is the Pipeline, Pipeline Association Coordinated Response Exercise. Bob had discussed that. If, um, would you like us to RS, one of us to RSVP for you? If, do any of you plan to attend that? There is a meal. I think that's the biggest reason for our, the RSVP.
And it says in your report, it starts at eleven thirty. Bob, how late do you think that'll run? So, it's eleven thirty to one thirty? I'd, I'd like to go to that.
And I'm going to go as well. It's been quite a while since I've been to one.
I'll plan on attending.
Okay. So, Stephanie, Leanne, Mike and Ri- Mike and Larry, okay.
Marty, excuse me, uh, Stacy, will you talk to the Hughes County Jail and see if we can get a tour of that, like, late afternoon or? Mm-hmm. Will that work for you?
That would. Leave it noon or something.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions of me.
Deputy State's Attorney's Report?
As we have been meeting, I really don't have any updates. Just like to welcome Commissioner Bartley, um, just working on various projects for the county. And, um, we are quite busy, as Marty can attest to as well, on our criminal matters. But otherwise, I have nothing else to report.
Moving on, Commissioner Reports and Discussion Items. Leanne, would you like to start?
I really don't have anything to report since our meeting last week, other than did attend the reception for Clyde Calhoun with the rest of you, and that was very nice last week. Thank you.
I guess, Mike, if you have.
Well, as a Commissioner-elect, I did attend. Clyde's Retirement Party, thank you. That was about it.
Ryan?
Nothing. Thank you.
I attended both the, the retirement party here and the social that he had at, at the Elkson. They were both very, very well attended. And I, I really wish that he could have seen how well attended they were, although I know he talked to everybody. But it was, I think it was a good farewell. And I, I really, I sincerely want to congratulate our, our gals that are taking over the State's Attorney's Office.
Okay, um, on the twenty-eighth, I had a Beta meeting, um, some more talk on, uh, working with the school, Beta, working with the school on securing some property for a joint venture on a bus barn. I think I'm moving forward, kinda moving forward, trying to be prepared if a grant would happen to become available. On the twenty-ninth, I attended Clyde's retirement, presented him with his, uh, new watch. Also, Winter Calf Show, I attended that out at the Swiftel. It was well attended. There was about a hundred and fifty entrants, I believe from four or five states. Um, the, the weather was decent, and it was, uh, well attended. And that's all I have.
One other thing, real quick, um, former Commissioner Y-Seth wanted us, I don't know if, if this is in our packet or if it's.
It will be.
It will be?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Then we won't read through all of it, though, but it, uh, is the, the list of two thousand sixteen awards for the Brookings Health System, and it's, uh, definitely long. And they've, they're doing a fantastic job out there, um, of, uh, really, um, top quality service and doing a great job out there. And just kinda shows there's seven recognitions they've received in two thousand sixteen. So, Commissioner Y-Seth was sitting on that board and wanted to make sure that, uh, they get recognition for how well they're doing, so.
I'd like to al- also add, uh, Mike, uh, Brookings Conservation District, they invite us to their meet, monthly meetings. Uh, we don't have anybody that serves as liaison there, but you're invited, if you're curious, you can attend, so. With that, uh, executive session, look for a motion.
I'll move that with going to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, that's SDCL one twenty-five two dash four.